I'd like to call to order this June 3, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of Education. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Martinez?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Moffett?
Here.
Ms. Schofield?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Item B agenda. One, motion to approve agenda. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the agenda of the June 3, 2020, regular Board of Education meeting. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one singular motion unless a member of the Board of Education, treasurer, or superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. So moved.
On second.
They moved in second at any discussion?
Nothing else has been added to this, correct?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Item C, evening ceremony. One, welcome. Our vision, Cuyahoga Falls City Schools, the hub of our community, committed to a culture of caring. We innovate, we create, we personalize education for all. Two, informational items. This meeting is a meeting of the Cuyahoga Falls Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not a public community meeting, although there are opportunities for public participation. If an individual wishes to address the board regarding a topic found on the meeting agenda, the individual must send an email to BOEmeeting@seafalls.org. Following the introduction of the topic by the board president, followed by board discussion, the individual will be recognized. If an individual wishes to address the board regarding a topic not found on the meeting agenda, she or he must notify the superintendent and/or board president of the topic no later than seven calendar days in advance of the meeting. The comments of these individuals will be read during the board business portion of the agenda. In both cases, comments will include the name and address of the individual and be limited to three minutes. In addition, in public session, the board will not hear complaints about school personnel nor against any person connected with the school system. An unabridged board agenda for this meeting can be found on your electronic device at the address shown on the screen, The next regularly scheduled meetings of the Cuyahoga Falls Board of Education are on June 24 and July 15, 2020, at 6:00 PM. There will be three special IBV training meetings with the board held virtually in executive session on June 15, June 16, and June 18, 2020. And now for our pledge of allegiance, Mr. David Martin.
Good evening, everyone. Please stand as you're able and join with us in our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Item D, presentation. Federal funding presentation. Ms. Kristi Stoycoy, Dr. Rachel Seifert, Mr. Cameron Lazar.
Do you need them at the microphone? Need you at the microphone to pick it up so people can hear.
We'll have to juggle roles here momentarily as we exchange speakers, so please bear with us. Greetings, President Schofield, Board of Education. Thank you very much for having us here today for this presentation on federal funding. Tonight is an annual requirement of the school district to present information on the expenditures that we engage in in regards to the federal funding that we receive through Title Funds.
We'll begin with talking about the Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Plan, or the CCIP. This is kind of the hub where everything is housed for federal funding. So it's a requirement from the Ohio Department of Education that the CCIP is a unified grants application and verification system that consists of two parts, the planning tool and the funding application. So the planning tool is the piece that holds the goals, the evidence-based strategies, action steps. We put our district goals in there and we house the amounts for each grant and it's continually adjusted and monitored throughout the school year. So the monitoring process, everything that's in that CCIP can be changed and flexed throughout the school year. That is typically done through our Ohio improvement process. So our district does that practice. We have our district leadership team, our building leadership team and teacher-based teams to monitor, analyze, and support building plans with best practices and continually adjusted and monitored throughout the school year. Then the other side is the funding application. This is where the budget is housed. This is where Mrs. Stoycoy does most of the work. So the budget is housed here. The budget details, that is married more with the CCIP piece. Non-public services are housed here and again, it's continually adjusted. So the whole goal of the CCIP is that it's a working document. That has changed a little bit for this school year because our district chose to complete the One Needs Assessment. It was optional for this year and we're in the cohort for next school year where it will be required, but our district chose to do that and so our entire CCIP has changed. So that's something I've been working with our consultant at the State Department and it just has a completely different look now. It's kind of exciting. So the first grant is Title I. The purpose of Title I is to provide all children significant opportunity to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education and to close educational achievement gaps. To achieve that, states must develop accountability systems to identify and support schools with academically struggling students and local education agencies and the schools use their Title I funds to improve student outcomes, including academic achievement. So schools must have at least a 40% poverty rate to operate under the school-wide model. We have five of our elementary schools right now that operate under that model. Silver Lake is the elementary school that does not, however, they're hovering around the 40th percentile. So that's something that we'll have to keep monitoring and looking into. In order to do all of this work, we have a comprehensive needs assessment that we do each year and we have documents that support this entire process. This is the budgeting that we have for Title I Part A. So this is the general overview. So these are the columns and the rows that you see when you look on the budget sheet right in the CCIP. This is broken down a little bit further so that you can see how we actually have the money divided up. So you can see the majority of our Title I funding is in salaries and fringe benefits. So you can see that we have eight Title I teachers in the district. In grades K through 5, we have approximately 17 teachers whose salaries and benefits come from this. And it could be in whole or it could be partial. Purchased services, we use this to support our learning A to Z for the elementary schools. And for supplies, this past year, we used this to purchase our Haggerty materials and our Sadler K through 1 workbooks. It's a requirement that you have money set aside for family and community. We set aside $15,000 this year. We did not use all of it, but we will recommend that we put that much in there again because we're going to use that to supplement some of our summer school. But we use that for our Black Tiger Cub Club. And then you can see the set aside there, $703.23 was not spent in transportation. Here's our set aside page. So you can see, if you look at the numbers that are highlighted in blue, when you go down that column, those total, that $11,000 figure, that's the total amount that we have in set asides. So that means before you do any configuring with your federal budget, you have that amount that is pulled out and then you look at what you have left over. So there's requirements for this. The non-public, their total set aside comes from their amount that was put into Title I. So they had $4,230 in their Title I and so you have to take 1% of that. That's not included in the set aside total at the bottom, but it's still required that you do that. So then when you're doing your consultations with them, you need to promote that they're having parent participation and that's some funding that they would use toward that. So the parent participation set aside is 1% of the total. So you can see that $6,900 is there. The required homeless set aside is one per pupil allocation. So basically, you take your total amount and you divide that by how many students you have that are economically disadvantaged and then you divide that and that's how you get your 1%. Our zero count for homeless is right there. That's something that we're actually looking into. We're not certain that the state has that accurate, so we're checking into that. There's no requirement for foster child set aside. This is a new grant that we received this year. This is called a Title I non-competitive funding grant. This was given to districts that have a school identified as priority-focused or warning and it's also schools that did not receive any funding from school improvement grants. So they took the leftover money that they had from that and they came up with a formula to divide that up. So if you look at the line that says the state education agencies are required to set aside 7% of the Title I award to support schools. So they had money left over and they're still required to use that 7%. So they took that 7% and then they divided it up across the priority schools, focus schools, and warning schools. We have two focus schools, our two middle schools, and because they're a focus school, they qualified for $32,500 each.
Rachel, I'm sorry, what is the difference between priority, focus, or warning?
Could you explain that? I think you could do a better job than...
What, the designations?
I'll have to get back to you.
Okay.
Those are, the focus is a federal designation. There's federal and state designations within there. So it can come from either and the focus is a newer thing.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So I wrote down, I put down there what are allowable spending categories and the unallowable categories because they're very specific on how you can use this non-competitive funding. So I put that down there just as a point of information. Again, here's a simplified version of that budget sheet. You can see that we allocated $9,000 for instructional supplies. One of the regulations with the non-competitive grant is that you can only use 15% of your total expenditure. So the middle schools has been needing novels to round out their ELA curriculum. So this was something that we were able to do and it's an allowable expense. We have $56,000, a little bit more than that, $56,000 left over and that's going to be carried over until the next school year so that we can make sure that we're doing a proper needs assessment so that we're spending that as carefully as we can. We've received some new CARES Act funding. This is very new, just in the past few weeks. This is something that school districts, you know, all school districts are receiving this. It's to help offset COVID-19. Our district, you can see in number two, received $570,863.43. The majority of that is going to be offsetting different expenditures that the district has incurred over time. We don't have all the details on that yet, so that's a little bit vague. Okay, so for Title II, the purpose of this grant is for state educational agencies, local educational agencies, or state education agencies for higher ed and eligible partnerships to increase student academic achievement through strategies such as improving teacher and principal quality and increasing the number of highly qualified teachers in the classroom and highly qualified principals and assistant principals in schools and to hold educational agencies and schools accountable for improvements in the student academic achievement. This comes directly from the government website and the reason I put that in there is because they're still using the phrase "highly qualified teachers", which is a little bit antiquated. So that's why I put that citation there. This is a picture of what the actual budget sheet looks like for Title II. And this is where we have our funding allocated. We have a class reduction that took place at DeWitt in first grade. So there's a salary that was allocated there. The majority of Title II tends to be used for professional development and you can see the list of the great opportunities that our district was afforded last year because of our Title II funding.
Mr. Martin, to answer your question, priority schools. Identification of a priority school will be based upon meeting at least one of the three criteria. One, schools with a four-year graduation rate of 67% or lower. Two, lowest performing schools using the report cards overall grade methodology. Or three, failure to improve subgroup performance over three-year identification period. And in terms of focus and warning schools, focus schools based on two criteria. Schools with subgroups performing at or below the performance of priority schools or school subgroups performing in the bottom 3% and had a low performance on the gap closing component. And then lastly, warning schools, identification warning schools is based on a single criteria. Schools with subgroups performing at or below the performance of priority schools. And what we will do is we will get you a list of our schools, what category they're in, if any, and then tell you why they're there.
Perfect, thank you.
All of our schools are independent except for Bowling and Roberts that have the focus school. So we had schools that were in the warning category for the past two or three years and this past school year, they all came out of that category. So you can have a focus and a warning. You can have both of those. So the middle schools did drop that warning category and they're just in that focus. So there was some good improvement with that. Yeah.
So to answer your question.
Yes.
All right, moving on to Title III. You'll see that identified here within, the state permits the expenditures of this funding in two separate categories. One being for English language acquisition and the other focused on immigrant status. So within those two broad generalized categories, the theme of this funding really focuses on the acquisition of English proficiency, encouraging and achieving high levels of learning for our English learners as well as meeting the same academic standards as typical peers. It also is able to be utilized for assisting teachers in effective English language acquisition programming. Next slide, please. So again, supporting those teachers and the last criteria, which is promoting parental and family community participation, which you'll see on the next slide. Just like the other sections of our title funding, this is a generalized, as Dr. Seifert explained, allocation expenditure based on how we utilize those funds. You'll see the total of $44,847.07. Go to the next slide, please. And this is where we get the great detail on how we utilize those expenditures. You'll see the predominant proportion was utilized in professional development. That's through sending our teachers to get certified through the Ohio T-Sol program. So you see those acronyms there. T-Sol, PSYOP. The Educational Service Center is one that you're very familiar with. T-Sol is really teaching English to speakers of other languages and that PSYOP is the Sheltered Instructional Program or Observation Protocol. So essentially, what those are, they are training programs that we utilize and send our teachers to so that they become more familiar with the different instructional strategies that are effective at meeting the written language and reading requirements that are within the acquisition of the English language. Looking over at supplies, you'll see that the quantity of funds that we use for supplies were in TEAM toolkits. Those are really curricular materials that are utilized to support the T-Sol and PSYOP training programs. So they're really robust in terms of supporting English language learner in meeting the requirements of, you know, reading, writing, and speaking. Rosetta Stone, which we all know is a language software that is utilized to help acquire new languages and also bilingual dictionaries to be able to provide to speakers of other languages so that they can easily translate some of the words that they're attempting to acquire and some novels in other languages as well. And then you'll also see under that instructional component, should have been the first one that I addressed. For the first time ever, we're offering two summer school programs or we're supporting two summer school teachers through the funding use of Title III. So those teachers are working directly with our English language learners to help them further their goals in acquiring English language. Oh, and I would be remiss to not acknowledge the wonderful events that we all participated in. The Welcome Back to School event, which really supports those learners and their families in, you know, setting up transportation, going through the application and enrollment process as well as our cultural fair, which is a great hit every year. We look forward to it again this year.
I have a question that you may not have the answer and I don't need it today, but do you know what percentage of our ELL kids will be attending these summer sessions?
I believe last I heard from Courtney, there were over 30. Is that correct, Ellen?
There were 20, 25 and 30 that were registered, enough for us to hire a secretary. Just in the elementary level.
And then some of those students will be able to flex into the reading program. Some will be scheduled so that they could benefit from both programs.
And this is at no charge to the children since the grant is picking up the tab, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, very excited for that opportunity. Again, on this side, you'll kind of see we've transitioned over into the immigrant side of the funding. Not as much money, $10,642. And if you go to the details page, I can elaborate on that a little bit more for you. If you'd go forward a couple slides. Yep, right there, there we go. So you can see some of the costs were to offset that Rosetta Stone purchase that we made through the English acquisition section of the programming. And then you'll also see additional funds to offset the costs of our T-Sol and PSYOP programming. As well as this year, the ESC offered some great sessions that were attended by many of our English as a Second Language teachers that offered more specific guidance for immigrants and newcomers and how to best support them as well. Any questions at all in regards to Title III?
So our next grant is Title IV. So if you look down the numbers, there's three different ways that we spend our funds for this. Well-rounded education, safe and healthy students, and effective use of technology. So the great thing about this grant is there's more flexibility for us to use this. So for example, we can help support our music program or our arts program. We can help support data dissection. This is where our curriculum audit came from. You can't see quite at the bottom. The only restriction they have on this is that for the effective use of technology, here we go, for the infrastructure, you can only use 15% of the grant funds and then you have to spend at least 20% in well-rounded and 20% in safe and healthy schools. And then after that amount, then you have flexibility. If you receive under $30,000, you don't have any restrictions on your funds. You can spend it with any percentage that you want. But you can see we have a little bit over eighty-two thousand dollars. So we need to make sure that we're falling into those percentage categories. So for this, we spent a great deal on professional development and purchase services. This is the fund that we were able to send our teachers and administrators to the STEAM cohorts. So years two and three came out of Title IV. Gizmos came out of Title IV. Planned Parenthood Programming came out of Title IV. Data Map, and then of course, the Curriculum Audit. And then we have some, some funds that'll be carried over.
All right, transitioning into IDEA, Individuals with Disability. You can see that the allocations that we receive from the federal government in regards to IDEA is directly to support students with disabilities, and they're providing, which is that free and appropriate public education for those students. It can be utilized for staffing, related services, and salary supplies that are necessary to support those students and their required IEP services. Again, that broad overview, you can see that one of the largest fund, one million forty-eight thousand dollars approximately, are allocated and supported through the federal government for supporting our students with disabilities. Next slide, please. And here's the detail. You can see that the vast majority of those funds goes directly to staffing. So almost six hundred thousand dollars goes directly to instruction, instructional salaries, and fringe benefits. And that ninety thousand dollars goes to governance and administration. My salary is a portion of that, as well as, I believe, administrative assistant? Along with the fringe benefits. For that little chunk left over, we're utilizing those funds to directly provide supplies and services. So those are health and sanitary supplies, that this is kind of an aside from our, our current COVID epidemic, but this is for the changing needs of students, health and sanitary supplies to keep our staff safe in those efforts and initiatives, as well as we, we undergo a consumable occupational therapy purchase at least once or twice a year to help support Cendero therapies and those things that they use up throughout the year. So this often looks like weighted vests, you know, there's some chewables for students, really to meet those sensory needs and support students direct services on their IEPs. And I guess, you know, something that, something that I would question is, you know, the amount that's used for staffing. We, I don't have the exact numbers, but we are certainly have some of the smaller caseloads in our region because of the staffing that we're able to provide through the use of these IDEA services. Provides more direct supports to students and a lot more quality services. Any questions at all in regards to IDEA?
This slide here shows the breakdown of administrators and teachers and how they're paid from each of the funds. Okay, so a big part of the CCIP is the non-public funding. So consultations with all of our non-public schools in the district begins in the spring, when the non-public schools fill out their average daily numbers for each school district where their students reside. And during this time, this is when the non-public schools choose which federal grants they would like to participate in to create equitable access to education and instruction for their students. So that's something that I walk the districts through. Consultations with the districts average two to three times per month, particularly for those schools that participate. The ones that don't participate, there's kind of a gap. I do a lot of consultations with them in the spring and in the fall, and then there's, you know, two, three months when, when there isn't a whole lot. Consultations with the districts average two to three times a month, starting in February, to help support the building principals. Some schools prefer more time than this, some prefer in-person meetings. We actually started in January, holding some in-person meetings, and several, several of the schools are starting to join. So that's something that the non-publics are appreciating. In the fall, consultations begin again to ensure that the schools have the support they need to spend their funding. The consultations average again two to three times a month, starting in August through November, to help support the building principals. During the school year, non-publics request support to identify and have purchases approved. It's actually a requirement of the public school to have these consultations. So it's something that's documented within the CCIP, and it's something that, that has to take place in order for the non-publics to fill out any of their documentation from their end. They can have access to Title I, Title II-A, Title III, Title IV, and IDEA funds. The Treasurers Department supports the non-publics with their auxiliary funds. So this school year, we had a total of nineteen non-public schools that were required to fill out the consultation documentation. We have four schools that opted to use the Title I-A funding. No schools followed through. And basically what that means is the, the funding that they, they wanted to have is now just sitting there. So it's something that, for example, if we were audited, somehow we have to get them to spend that money because they said they wanted it. So we have to get them to spend that money. So there's, it's a little bit tricky with that. Two of the schools that did that this past year chose not to opt for that funding after hearing that explanation, that that money just sits there. We had a total of four schools request support with Title II-A. No schools requested support for Title III or Title III immigrant, and we had four schools request support with Title IV.
That culminates our presentation. If you have any questions or recommendations for the upcoming school year, always appreciate and value your input. Certain thoughts or ideas about how we could more mindfully spend our allocations moving forward?
A quick question, when they choose not to use the money, how long are they allowed to keep it?
When they choose not to use it?
Right. If it's just sitting there, how long can it be dormant before some kind of action is required?
So at, at the end of every year, we can choose when we carry over the funds to not carry that over for them, but then it's just lost completely. It doesn't go back to us. So it's, once they kind of take it, it's out of our hands. They either spend it, or they don't end up carrying it over to the next year.
I believe they have twenty-seven months to carry it over. So that, that's one of the things that I think we've been working on, is helping them understand the purpose of accepting those funds, and why that's valuable and can be beneficial to them, but why it's also valuable to decline if they don't want it, because then that funding would go to another school that would, would need that. So that would be right in children's hands that need that for their education. So I think that that's, that's an important thing, and it, you know, it's a little bit of a balance to try to explain that and understand that. We certainly want them to have access to that funding if they need it and want it and can benefit from it. But if it's just gonna sit idle for twenty-seven months and then, then go back, that's a shame because we have, we have students out in the community that could use that.
Anything else, board members?
No, thank you for putting this together.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate your work.
Thank you both.
Item F, excuse me, item E, Treasurer CFO's Business Consent Agenda.
I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve all items listed in the Treasurer's Consent Agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's removed and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the following donations. I believe there are two of them.
Ms. Stoykoy, I think we need the minutes. No, we don't. We are ready for F. My apologies. We're ready for donations, right where you needed to be.
There are two. One is the money we had talked about when we previously did the Fred Azar contract from the Gridiron Club, the fifty-five hundred dollars, and then another donation at Richardson Elementary.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded that we accept the donations. Any discussion?
And just want to thank the folks who, and the clubs who donated either the items or the funding, because as we know, with the way the economy's been impacted, we appreciate everyone and those that are helping us out to try to keep our expenses low.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
I do not have a whole lot of anything, because there's not a lot of answers on anything yet. Still waiting to see, and I don't expect it really till early July, what's going on with state funding. I anticipate that they will close their fiscal year end and kind of see where they're at and then make those decisions. Everything's still kind of very up in the air, as is everything else, as you know. So once I, once we know something and I know something, I will, I will let you guys know.
Thank you, Ms. Stoykoy. Item G, Superintendent CEO's Business Consent Agenda.
Thank you, President Schofield. Members of the Board, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve all items listed under the Superintendent's Business Consent Agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Hold on, discussion?
Yes.
All right, is there a little bit of discussion?
A little bit.
Okay.
Okay, because I, only because I got two members of my-
Well, they are.
-team here in the audience that are on the consent agenda, and I'd like to welcome to Cabinet Ryan Hutch as a Director of Instructional Technology. Ryan, you have anything you want to say?
Yes. I should have known better. I'm just thrilled that you continue to serve our district. It's been a great five years at Gold Lake. I've loved every minute, most of all the minutes. And I'm just excited to serve the district in a, in a more global capacity. So I'm thankful for the opportunity and thankful for Jim Morris, his leadership and guidance and, and also for the Davids who have done a great job of helping as we work together as a team. We're getting things, it's a very new team, we're kind of all new at the same time, so we're, we're powering through together, and we're doing a great job of helping out the time. Thank you.
Okay, and one other quasi-new member of our administrative team, joining us as an Associate Principal at Kaiba Falls High School, Jason Smith.
I just want to say things. You know, this will be, I believe, my eighth year in the One X Tiger family, and, you know, I had the opportunity to serve as the Dino students, and like Dr. Nichols said, kind of a quasi-administrative role. I love every minute of it. I learned so much from so many great people. I'm really just thankful and looking forward to continue this part now officially in that administrative role. So I just, again, I want to say thank you to everybody that has helped me, Natalie Bonden, Dr. Nichols, Emily Murphy, Central Office, has done a lot for me, and I've learned a lot, so I'm looking forward to continue that process. So thank you very much.
Well, before we take a vote, I, I'd like just to add that we have watched both of you work over the course of the past few years. So we certainly know what we're getting when we're adding our direct, new Director of Technology to our district-level team. And Mr. Smith, your, your work at the high school, we've heard nothing but wonderful things about how you relate to students and staff. So we're grateful for the work that you do on behalf of everyone here in Kaiba Falls, and we wish you the best in your new positions in the days ahead. So let's have a roll call?
I would like to-
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Martin.
I would like to thank Mr. Morris for his service as well. I appreciated his vision, and as I was on the board a little bit longer, began to appreciate the vision of everyone here in this room, because it is going, for our education, for our kids, it's going in the direction that we have to go. Whether we want to go or not, it's where we have to go. And the technology that was there, Mr. Morris and I had, we were on the same page before. We knew we were on the same page. Mr. Hutch, I'm looking forward to seeing you move into that role. I appreciate everything that IT does for, not only our students, but for our staff. Jason, looking forward to you moving into that position as well. And I will thank our HR Director, as well as our Superintendent, for having a system in place now that we have folks that can replace others who have decided it's time to move on. And that's part of what I was always taught from the time I was a kid, that no matter what you do in your life, you always want to try to leave it better when you leave than it was when you came here. So I'm sad that Mr. Morris has opted to leave us. However, I'm very excited about our two new members that are joining our administrative team. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, a roll call now. Thank you.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Ms. Moffett?
Hi.
Welcome aboard, officially.
Yep, thank you.
Item H, Superintendent CEO's Business, Dr. Todd Nichols.
Hi, yes, President Schofield, members of the Board. The first item is facility construction update. Sadly, I have nothing new to report in that area. And we're all, as Chris, as Christie said, we're all just kind of waiting for the budget, state budget to hit, and see where we can go with things. The second item in terms of digital learning, I am incredibly proud of our, our team and where they're, where they're going. We have, we, we have developed two task force teams, if you will, and we have scheduled weekly meetings as a, as a team, and they're doing, we have subcommittees, we've divided them into subcommittees for the platform development. In other words, you know, how we're gonna deal with our technology and, and sharing our curriculum with, with regard to the technology platform. Of course, instructional delivery, K-5, and instructional delivery 612, our curriculum delivery and assessment team, K-12, and we got to know where the kids are. When, when, when they return, we have to know where they are in the cognitive continuum and, and on our curricular path. And then we also have another subcommittee, the Community Assistance and Communications piece. So that's the, that's the academic side of the task force, and then we also have more of what I would call the operational side task force. And they also have weekly meetings, and it's right before this larger academic, or, you know, larger academic task force meeting. And those two task force teams will be dovetailed throughout the process. There's crossover between the two. And the operation side includes transportation, food service at all buildings, cleaning and safety, clinic. So our nurse, our school district nurse is on the team. Margie's on the team. It's headed up by Joe Bagatti. Bill Bailey's on the team. We have Aaron Woodard on the team for maintenance. We have custodians on the team as well, and we have Kenny Johnson, KJ, is on the team from athletics and, and activities. So I'm really excited about those teams and that collective expertise that then we're all working cohesively together to prepare ourselves for the fall. I will say that, you know, there are two major, major concerns that really drive both ends of things. And those major concerns start with transportation, getting our kids here, you know, for that portion, I guess, three major concerns. Transportation, getting our kids here, and what we're going to be able to do. So today, or this evening, right before this meeting, I was on a OSBA and ODE Town Hall meeting. It was sponsored by OSBA, and Dr. Richard, John Richard, was the guest speaker, so our Deputy Superintendent at state level. And he did make mention of something that I've seen in some preliminary documentation, preliminary guidance, that is not for distribution yet, but in its in draft form, but coming from state level, that on a seventy-two passenger bus, we're gonna be able to put one student per seat, is, is what we're hearing out of the guidance. I know that was a concern, because in other places, we had heard that we were only gonna get nine kids on a bus, based on the six-foot and social distancing. Also, hearing that if you live in the same household, you may be able to share a seat on a bus. So that changes the game a little bit for us. If we're allowed, if it's triple the number we can get on a, on a seventy-two passenger bus, while it's still gonna be challenging, you know, you go from seventy-two to twenty-four, twenty-six kids on a bus, that's still gonna be challenging, getting them to school, but it's, it's less challenging than it would have been if it's nine. The other piece, we received some guidance from TDA, who has shared with us a document on maintaining social distance. And so this is a concern, and has showed us some configurations, possible configurations in a classroom, and, and they're a little scared, in a sense, well, they're very scary, in the sense that an eight-hundred-and-sixteen-square-foot classroom, which is fairly typical for us, I mean, nine-hundred-square-foot classroom is in OSCC, and some of our classrooms are even smaller than eight-hundred-and-sixteen square feet. Well, these, these three different configurations have six, seven, and nine students in the classroom. So if you're only gonna be able to get nine students in a classroom based on social distancing configurations, that presents a whole lot of operational challenges for us and academic challenges. So that brings up the third major concern is the delivery of the curriculum, both in person and through virtual means. And we are, we have issued three surveys, as you know. We've issued surveys to family, six through twelve students, and to our faculty. And those surveys are coming back. We've reviewed the preliminary information from those surveys today in our, in our task force meeting, and, and using that information to kind of guide our decision-making as we go forward. Predominant majority of our, of our, of our community, of our, you know, faculty, families, and students, they want to come back online. I would say it's more split among students, you know, they're, they're better at it than anybody, but they want to come back and be in person. The, the complication is the other two pieces that I shared with you, is while we may want to, we may not be able to. And so nonetheless, we've set up these meetings, like I said, once a week, and the subcommittees, and they're doing their work prior to the large group work on, on Wednesday, and, and I really look forward to it. And, you know, today's meeting was, was, was good, was very, very good. So I'm very happy with, very happy with the team. So the third piece, in turn, is Superintendent's comments. I asked, as I do every year, asked our high school administration guidance counselors to share some statistics with regard to each of the cohort groups, classes, the graduating classes. And so I'll just share it with you, the data that they shared with me from Cohort 2020. I really haven't put it in a comparative form yet, but it sounds pretty powerful to me, as far as what I'm gonna share with you. There were three hundred and forty students that graduated in Cohort 2000, or 2020. And in terms of AP exams taken, there were two hundred and fifty-four AP exams taken from, from this class. From Cohort 2020, they earned one point three, one point two-five-eight million dollars in, in- class. From cohort 2020, they earned 1.3, 1.258 million dollars in, in money. Now, that could actually be higher than that because the students have to self-report, right? But that's what we know for now. And cohort 2020 in terms of CCP credits, 1,509 college credits earned by the class of 2020. So, you know, we said all along the class of 2020 was special. Like I said, I haven't done any comparative statistics, but those sound pretty good to me. And then the last thing that I would say is this was the wrap-up week for, not that anything's wrapped up because they're still in committees and, and so on and so forth. But nonetheless, we had our administrative retreat Monday and Tuesday of this week. And Monday, we went through strategic plan, went through the district goals from 1920, and started creating district goals or preliminary district goals from, for 2020, 21 school year that come directly from our strategic plan. So I'm really, really happy with that work. And then Tuesday, we spent the day with Dr. Elise Furtura from Integrated Comprehensive Systems for Equity. And that was an extremely powerful day and great work. And a few of you, board members, had the opportunity to join us and a wide group, we had 44 participants in the meeting. And, and that was pretty powerful work as well. And great discussion. So there you have it from me.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols.
May I just find out, I happened to get a compliment about our school system from a former employee, actually a former librarian in this system, who is now living in Portland, Oregon. And she gave our system kudos because she said that we were light years ahead in the way we delivered instruction to our students when we had to close our schools compared to a whisper at the school system that her granddaughter attends. So she was impressed with the quickness of delivery. She was impressed with instructions for curriculum that parents received compared to what they received as parents. So I wanted to thank everyone who made that possible and want you to recognize that we are being recognized on the West Coast for the work that we do.
Dr. Nichols, I was going to ask you, I've been out talking with parents and one of, and I don't want to say complaint, that's not the right word. But one of the suggestions for maybe an improvement is if we have to go back to a, a distance learning model again this coming fall, is can we find a way for all of our students' assignments to be in one central location? One of the big issues has been, you know, the parents and students go to this one location and they get what they think is everything. And then they find out they still have stuff missing. And they're finding that, well, you had to go here, you had to go here. So that's kind of what I'm hoping that we might be able to address because this was kind of dumped in our laps and we were on the ground running. So if that's one thing that possibly we might be able to take a look at for the fall, that's just some of the feedback that I'm hearing.
I'm smiling under the mask because that was part of our discussion right from the very beginning that we have to simplify things for our parents. I mean, there are a whole lot of options that were out there and our staff made great use of those options and our, and our tech team, you know, provided all kinds of options and professional development. But for parents, it got to look crazy. And so we've already had that conversation. And so as part of the surveys, you know, we asked, you know, what worked well in each one of the situations. And so we're going to narrow it in terms of where people have to get their resources.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Item I, Board Business. Number one, resolution declaring it necessary to renew an existing levy.
A second?
God love you. Any discussion?
Now, this is just for what we're looking to put the renewal for this November.
Exactly right. That's exactly right, Mr. Martin. I think we're ready for a roll call, Ms. Stone. Go ahead.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye. Future agenda items.
It's not so much an agenda item, but I believe I'm next one up for agenda review, I think in two weeks. And I was going to ask fellow members if I might be able to move that time to noon. I have an educational class at 8:30 in the morning and it should be done at noon. So if we can move that to 12, then I'll just go ahead because we're, I'm anticipating we're going to zoom that agenda review unless you want to meet in person.
Noon is fine with me either way. That's the 17th?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
You're just like me.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Um.
Do it later, baby.
So.
Next time.
Yeah. Mrs. White will know. So I, I have an item I'd like on our next agenda. And it has to do with a board resolution to allow our third graders to take their state testing paper pencil rather than online. So last year, the Department of Education changed its rules for testing third graders. And rather than requiring them to take English Language Arts and Math online, they had the option of returning to paper and pencil. And they had a number of reasons for this. Their rationale started with, this is the first time for state testing for third graders. And it's the only grade level that's assessing four years of instruction. So they're getting assessed for the first time by the state at K1, 2, 3, and bingo, here's their first test. Now, the other grade levels only assess one year of instruction. So if you're a fourth grader, you're assessed on the fourth grade stuff or a fifth grader or whatever. The second thing is that because it's cumulative, it's more impactful. And that's why they have the third grade guarantee. So it's the only grade level that has the high stakes associated with it. If you're a fourth grader and you don't meet your proficiency score, there's no law that said you need to be considered for retention. But for third grade, there is. So it's a high stakes test. The other issue was, we have to make sure we're measuring reading and math abilities and not computer skills. And so if you were to go to the ODE website and take the third grade test online, you'd see it entails multiple screens, scrolling back and forth from reading text, answering questions to typing sentences, dragging and dropping and so on. And we're never quite sure if those things are getting in the way of accurate test results. And then finally, just physically, sometimes even by third grade, little ones aren't physically mature in terms of eye tracking, in terms of small muscle control, to really do a good job on these so that they can show us what we know, that what they know. So I know that it will give us an opportunity to really, I think, get a clear measure of what our kids know and be able to do. And so to do that, a board of education has to put a resolution on saying, we'd like to use paper pencil for our third graders. Now, that resolution has to be passed by board by July 1. So that's why it's under future agenda items for next week, uh, next month, or next week, or next meeting in another lifetime or another galaxy. So I'd like to put that on as a future agenda item for our next meeting. So we'll move on.
No, I, I'd like to bring back the book club sometime soon.
Okay. And we're going to put book club on?
You know, maybe we need to go over, I don't know if you want to wait till the, the training and then maybe bring the book club after that's done, the negotiation training.
Okay.
And, and then just, you know, we can take that list that Mr. Gomez made and, you know, adjust the dates for us. So.
Okay. So we'll put, we'll put that on. You want, you want to make it for our next agenda, Ms. White, or the one after that?
Doesn't, I, it's not a rush. I mean, I know we have other things much more important to do.
Okay.
Whenever.
All right then. Thank you. And we're ready for committee reports? Alliance for School and Community Growth, Mrs. Moffett?
We have none presently. A meeting will be coming up we can report on another time.
Thank you, Mrs. Moffett. Athletics and Activity Council, Mr. Martin?
Well, things are changing, it seems, daily with the Ohio High School Athletic Association. There's been some movement. There's still no definitive direction yet as to what we can and can't do. Our next meeting will be June 22, I believe, at 5:30 PM. I believe that's a Zoom meeting as well. So looking forward to seeing, hopefully that the state has a little more firm guidance and we can see if we can do something this fall.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Board Policy, Ms. White and Mr. Gomez.
We'll be meeting on June 8, 5:15 to go over many policies.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Business Advisory Council, Ms. White, Mr. Martin?
We.
I was going to say, I apologize as I was not able to attend that meeting. We had a very, very quick startup and a callback to work. So my apologies to my fellow invited council members on that.
I, I thought it was really good, even though I lost my picture for some reason. I don't know what happened there, but I could hear. And I did take notes. We do, will need to replace Keith on that. So sometime we'll have to appoint. I know that Laura and Bob still wanted to continue because they felt two years was not long enough to get involved. And just some of the basics, they were asked about the internships. They, those are discontinued. And hopefully they'll return, but we think very slowly they, they will return. Let's see what else here. Laura is just wonderful. She has built a website that is on the Chamber webpage. And on it, she has all these kinds of wonderful information about the library maker space, the one at the hospital, the interns, mentors, and apprenticeships that our kids could use. When I mentioned maybe putting service on there, she, she, oh yes, we can do that too. So that our kids, especially if they're looking for that new seal, could go on there and see what services might, they, they might be able to participate in. But it's just a wonderful site to link them with us. And so that was really good. We are going to look at the strategic, the strategic plan with our policy and goals for the BAC. So, Mr. Martin, you need to have the, the two sets here to kind of look for that strategic that we'll be talking about next time. And I think, I don't, it's just, it's just wonderful to work with those people. They're so knowledgeable.
Thank you, Ms. White.
What Ms. White was referring to is Business Advisory Council and Board of Education Joint Plan. We started work on that joint plan. We incorporated that joint plan, a review of that joint plan into our administrative retreat. That will be the key focus of our work in Alliance on Tuesday because I've, I've got a June Alliance meeting and an August Alliance meeting and one BAC meeting between now and the September 30 deadline when we have to submit it.
Great. Thank you, Ms. White. Financial Advisory Committee, Mr. Martin?
Well, this is a busy time for our Treasurer's Department. So there's not much to report. So just keep up the great work.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Foundation and Alumni Association, Mr. Gomez?
We'll be meeting via Zoom next Tuesday.
Thank you. Legislative Liaison, Mr. Gomez, again, please.
Just two things to report on tonight. House Bill 239 is a priority bill in the Ohio General Assembly. It would require all districts to create a work group to evaluate the amount of time students spend on testing. And it would make optional instead of mandatory the ACT or SAT and extends the third grade reading guarantee moratorium for the 2020, 2021 school year. And the other is House Bill 194, which legalizes and regulates sports gaming and earmarks 98% of the sports gaming profits for education. I actually read that bill because I was interested to see if that would be additional funds for us. Per usual, that would not be additional funds for schools. That's not a guaranteed add-on. It's just that money would be earmarked for education.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
Mr. Gomez's question was prepared to legislation. Mr. Gomez, I heard in one of my superintendent's meetings today about House Bill 310 being introduced by Huffman. I don't know if you, I, I don't imagine you've had the opportunity to take a look at that, but I would recommend that, that when we have the opportunity, we take a look at, at that piece as well.
Okay.
Student Achievement Liaison. I think I mentioned to you that the statewide student achievement liaisons through OSBA are having our virtual meetings this once through Zoom. We're invited to attend all of them regionally. The agendas are similar, but the conversations are diverse. So I plan on joining as many as I can. Much of the conversation is about reopening school assessments, the COVID slide. And I hope I'm able to bring some good information to Dr. Nichols and the task force on some of the things that we learn in the next couple weeks. One other thing, in honor of Ms. Patty White, I have an article to read. But this is from the April issue of Phi Delta Kappa. And it's on equity. And I thought it was timely considering that yesterday we just had our equity workshop. So I hope you find this of interest as well. It's important to remind ourselves why so much attention has come to focus on equity in education and how education leaders tend to look at the issue. Since the enactment of No Child Left Behind in 2002, public schools have had to deal with a constant outpouring of data that revealed disparities in achievement among student populations. Whatever NCLB's flaws, and there were many, it brought these disparities into the sunlight, forcing principals and superintendents to both acknowledge them and make concrete plans to address them. For nearly two decades, school and system leaders all over the country have had no choice but to collect student achievement data, disaggregate it, identify gaps, and try to close them. They've been required to look at education through an equity lens. But NCLB's equity lens isn't sufficient. It directs attention to things like test scores, graduation rates, and biased curriculum, but it doesn't provide a clear picture of the more subtle systems of oppression that exist within schools and districts. If we're truly committed to social justice, then we need to take a deeper look at the ways in which bias and favoritism shape the decisions that get made in places like school board meetings and district offices. Decisions having to do with everything from teacher recruitment to operations, curriculum, planning, student assessment. I'll end there, but it's well worth a read. And it's so timely considering our work here in the district on equity. Item J, Executive Session. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1, it's hereby moved to board adjourned. Please excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mar, Mr. Gomez. I'm ahead of myself or behind myself tonight. Let's start with you, Mr. Gomez.
Well, it ties into what you said. I only have one comment to make in light of recent events that Black Lives Matter, our Black students matter in this school district. And I know that I speak for the entire board in saying, if our diverse communities, our Black families in our district feel that there are ways in which we can be better advocates for them, please make your voices known so that we can make those necessary changes if they are there.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Ms. White?
I really don't have. I really don't have any comments tonight, it just, uh, thank you, Mr. Gomez, I wholeheartedly agree.
Mr. Martin?
The only comment that I have is, uh, I have spoken about the nonprofit that I'm involved with. And we anticipate having a partnership sealed with the Akron Canton Food Bank by the end of this month. And that should give us the ability to start moving out and helping kids as well as families in Summit County, of which we do hope Cogafalls will be part of that. So looking forward to that, it's, uh, going a little bit larger than we thought it would, so we're excited.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mrs. Moffett?
I really have nothing to add, other than I want to thank Mr. Gomez for his comment. And, um, I too believe that we have some work to do in that area, so input would be appreciated.
Thank you. Now we're ready for J. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section one two, one point two two G one, it's hereby moved to board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of an employee or official of the school district.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Adjourned. Moved.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, roll call. Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Madam President, did you want to make sure that we get recorded what time we came back from executive session?
What time is it now?
Thank you.
All right. Have a great evening, everyone.
Yes.
Thank you.
You too.
Enjoy the weekend.
Bye, Anthony.
Bye.
Bye.